Before the hearing and one minute after. Let the record reflect that we have a quorum with a full court. Before we begin, do we have Pastor John Conrad here? Do not? All right, Commissioner Aiken, will you lead us in a quick prayer?
Father, we ask that as we carry out the business of the county that we are able to take and listen to those who are here. Father, we ask that you got our heart and minds. Father, most importantly, we ask that we be what you want us to be and that we take and conduct ourselves in a manner that you would be proud of. Father, we always hope that the days ahead are numerous, but we know that at times that we lose people. Father, I'd like to ask a special prayer that you remember my son at this time is there's no workplace accident or a death of his friend happened. Father, I'd like for you to remember him and those that work with him and has a family. We know that we can get comfort from you and understanding from you. Father, please watch over us in the days ahead. And your sons say amen.
Amen.
United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, and let allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Before we begin, I should let you know there is a typographical error on the agenda. There is not an agenda item number five, but we will follow the numerical numbers that are on here. Do we have any public comments? Agenda item number four, certificates and awards of completion. We have Commissioner Martin completed his Commissioner's Education Certification and Completion, Article eighty-one point zero-two-five. Judge Whitman completed six hours at the VG Young School for County Commissioners Court. Commissioner Aiken completed four hours at the VG Young County Commissioners Court Seminar. As the same for Russell King, Commissioner King completed sixteen hours. Eleven hours by Commissioner Martin at the VG Young School for County Commissioners Court. Entered to record a Masterpiece Officer's License for Constable Lietka. And I think we probably need to get a hold of the other constables that have that put into record as well. Constable Lietka completed his course at the Sam Houston State University Criminal Justice Center for newly elected constable. Agenda item number six, we have our county extension report. Do we have anybody? Okay, good, all right.
Good morning, everyone. Y'all have our complete February reports, so if y'all have any questions, just let me know. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, so we, all the family and community health agents in our district or actually in our region, got to go to Fredericksburg to their extension office to do a culinary medicine training. So that is just working with food and having delicious, healthier recipes that have less sodium, less sugar, things like that. We also got to do a little bit, a refresher on our knife skills, how to do cooking demonstrations, little tips and tricks, so it was fun. Well, it's using food as medicine instead of having to take a pill or something. Yes, sir. Yes, so I did a Mediterranean presentation, which is the Mediterranean eating style is probably the, one of the most researched eating patterns that we have and the most healthful one, so I did one for the county employees a few weeks ago, so.
Nicole, I need to ask you this question. We already talked about what's affecting the post oak trees and the blackjacks, and it is not oak wilt, correct?
It is not oak wilt.
Because my neighbors are losing trees, we're all losing trees. Is your recommendation to cut them and burn them?
I would double check with Samantha with that, but for, to burn them, not right now, we're gonna burn them.
No, we can cut them, but burn them later, because there's a lot of fungus on those trees.
Yes, it's the hypoxin cancress is right now, yeah. We can double check with Samantha and then our forestry department to make sure there's nothing else going on. But don't, don't say oak wilt, that's terrifying to me, because we're, we live close to each other.
I have a lot of live oak trees that I don't want to lose either.
Exactly, yeah, so, but just little, making sure when you're cutting them, it's really, really cold or really, really hot so the beetles don't move around, because that's what transfer the fungus from tree to tree, so it's little beetles. And then, sorry. And I just know this from listening to Samantha.
Okay, well, no, later on, just let her, ask her what we should do, so my neighbors are asking me and I don't know what to do.
Oh, absolutely, yes, I will.
All right.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Agenda item number seven, we have Ms. Brenda Trevino, our county auditor, discuss and take action on approving a budget amendment to correct transfers from the general fund into precincts three and four.
Yes, good morning. So last week or a couple of weeks ago, Kristin, my first assistant, was reviewing our general ledger report and noticed that I made a mistake during budget entry at the time. It does not affect the overall budget, I just did a swap and I provided Commissioner Perdola and Commissioner Aiken copies, but I also have a copy here for the court where we did the transfer from the general fund balance to the commissioners for additional monies for road repairs. Precinct three, Commissioner Perdola, should it have, should had had a transfer of six hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents from the general fund. The amount that was trans, or the amount that's listed in the budget was seven hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and one thousand and forty-six cents, and that is the amount that goes to precinct four. The expense side is correct on both sides, it's just the revenue got swapped. So it doesn't, again, it doesn't affect the bottom line budget, but I do need a budget amendment in order to make that change. And so I have copies here for Commissioner King, Commissioner Martin, if you'd like to take a look at it. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve and ending the budget to correct the transfers on precincts three and four from the general fund. Revenue minus. For precinct three, it's seven forty-six, two oh one forty-six, six seven, three six oh seven twenty. And precinct four, six seven, three six oh seven twenty to seven forty-six.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner King. We have any other discussion regarding agenda item number seven?
Can you just transfer the difference?
I'll just correct the dollar amounts in the budget, so it would be.
Seven two thousand five nine four twenty-six.
Correct, you're going to increase by that amount, so everyone collect the amount that Commissioner read.
Any other?
Non-interest bearing accounts.
Yeah, that's, that's not correct. That's money taken from the fund balance that was during the budget.
Any other discussion on agenda item number seven? Here none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. Agenda item number eight, we have Commissioner Gary Martin discuss and take action to reappoint David Nieto and Sherry Heatherly to the ESD number two board of commissioners.
So Captain Nieto and Ms. Heatherly are here this morning, they've been serving their terms. I believe one of them expires the end of this month and the other one expires the end of next month. We want to reappoint them. Well, I guess come on up here.
Good morning. I'll just, when I ask for your name, just state your name, then I'll say the rest for you, okay? Raise your right hand, please. Aye? Do solemnly swear affirm that I will fully execute the duties of the Office of Commissioner, ESD two of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of the state, so help you God. All right, congratulations. I'm gonna have you step over here and sign exonerations right quick. Move to agenda item number nine, we have our Justice of the Peace, Judge Jared Shaw.
Judge, do we need a vote to reappoint?
No, we didn't, you're right, you're right, okay, hold on a minute. Thank you, Commissioner, you caught it. Evelyn caught it? Okay. Any other discussion regarding agenda item number eight? Motion was made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner King. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Aye to have it, thank you, appreciate it. Agenda item number nine, we have Judge Shaw, Justice of the Peace, precinct one, discuss, take action on a request for additional funding through the end of April to cover payroll expenses for employee out on extended sick leave.
Good morning, gentlemen and ladies. As you know, one of my deputy clerks had a pretty serious leg, broken leg in January, and she's been out since that time, first week of January. I do have a part-time seasonal employee that I had budgeted in last year's budget. That money has since been exhausted because she has had to work as many hours as possible. She's only allowed to work twenty-nine hours a week. She had been working, you know, about sixteen to twenty, but now the money's gone. And my full-time employee is not scheduled to be back until probably the first week of May. Got an update to her medical situation last week, she's not allowed to put any weight on that leg until the first week of May, and then she'll be able to come back, but she'll still be in and out for physical therapy. My request to the court is to fund my part-time seasonal employee to and through the time that my full-time employee comes back. Right now, I'm running at a deficit of eleven hours a week, have been since January and will be through the time that she returns. So I need to ask you for about seven thousand dollars in salary to cover the expense of my part-time seasonal employee through the time that she returns and some coverage while she's going to be doing her physical therapy and needs to be out of the office. Open for any questions if you have.
Brenda or Jalen, can you explain how we account when somebody's out on extended sick leave or FMLA? How does that affect the salary budget line, and that's what I'm confused about?
When an employee is out on extended leave, they are still part of the payroll, they're just using vacation or sick time at that point, so their salary is still being paid.
What's FMLA, fourteen weeks?
It's twelve.
Twelve.
Judge, what's your workload like? And the second part of that is how much is this truancy compared to not truancy?
All right, we have a fairly high workload to begin with, and truancy can be a factor, but it's not really the end-all-be-all here. For the last two months, we've set new records for the last two years since I've been in office for amount of income, just gross income for my precincts. We exceeded twenty thousand dollars in January and twenty-six thousand in gross income in February. As far as our caseload, there's a lot of, a lot of that is just traffic tickets and, you know, we do have quite a bit of civil court. As far as truancy, truancy is on the ramp up. You know, Florisville, you know, I've got tomorrow on my docket thirty-nine cases of truancy impairing contributing. Most of that, actually all of that is for Florisville. In two weeks' time, I will have close to fifty cases to go through, and only, I think, three of those are for Laverneia and none for Stockdale, none for both. That's all for Florisville.
Have you talked to JP about helping you with truancy, sir?
Yeah, and, you know, Judge Griffin and I, we have a sharing agreement on that. And, you know, it's actually, you know, he's covered for me a couple of times, he's heard a few cases. So it's, it's something that we are working together on.
Pedro, is there anything that would stop this package from possibly working from home to town?
I would consider her position light duty to begin with anyways, so if a physician was to release her on light duty, I believe that is an option.
I'm not certain about light duty or not. All I know is that she's not allowed to put any weight on that leg, so she is able to be mobile with a walker right now, but, you know, she's not able to put her left foot to the ground, you know, in any way. So it's, it's gonna be touch and go as far as, you know, what her doctor says as she's recovering.
That's an option, can we look at that?
I'd be glad to look into it, yeah, I can ask her. Absolutely, if we have to deliver files to her and she can work from there, we can have her work remotely, you know. The IT guys can set her up with a laptop or something, that we might be able to have that as an option.
That may help as well in terms of her financial position, because I do believe she is exhausted all of her medical needs and she's currently being paid out of the going sick pool that that panel will go for so far.
Is there enough in that sick pool for her to go to the end?
The last payroll was the last amount that could be allocated toward her, so the last payroll that was processed the end of February had some sick, she exhausted her sick for vacation and a little bit of LP, which actually was roughly almost thirty hours. And then this particular payroll that's gonna be processed, that was due in our office this one time she was raised, because everything else is exhausted.
Okay, so what, from where would these funds come from, Brenda?
So based on the email that Judge Shaw sent at the end of February, so correct me if these numbers have changed, but he requested three hundred and forty-eight hours at that time, which is the equivalent of, at twenty-nine hours a week is the equivalent of twelve weeks. So if those numbers are accurate at sixteen dollars and forty-two cents, including the employer taxes that we have to pay, the amount would be six thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty cents. He is currently over budgeted in that line item by six hundred dollars, so the total would be six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty cents. That is at three hundred and forty-eight hours, so if he's requesting more, those numbers would then increase. The only area, I did review Judge Shaw's budget, he does not have any wiggle room in any of his other line items to move monies around as you've done in the past, so there is no money. So you would actually have to consider a budget amendment to move money from another department, and the only department that would have those types of funds would be our non-depart, non-departmental department in the reserve for unexpected expenses line item, to which we budgeted, I believe there's a hundred thousand plus in there. So if you were to consider a budget amendment, it would be to transfer from non-departmental reserve into JP one. Temporary seasonal. Again, and then when the new budget comes around for fiscal year twenty-six, his seasonal temporary line would be reduced back to the original amount that was budgeted for. Also, and Judge Shaw stays on top of this as well, but knowing once that money runs out, his seasonal employee cannot work because there's no, no money left in the budget. So if hours were to be approved up to a certain point, then he'd either have to come back to the court to ask for additional funds or not have a temporary employee. Did I say that correctly?
Mm-hmm, you did. So.
What do we have as far as policy? Are we in a chart of territories where this number happened before?
I'm not sure, I'm not really sure that policy is what the issue is here. I think it's more of a budgeting issue than a policy issue, in my opinion.
Well, the reason I oppose it, the way that I believe this is, if I heard correctly, she's adopting runoff benefits.
Correct.
And that will entail us stopping from paying anything from Milton County, and we have an amount budgeted for her to serve in her job capacity, but we won't be doing it after that time period because that's the way our policy structure reads out. So those monies from her salary could be allocated to part-time seasonal?
I don't think so.
Okay, I, I mean, you're gonna end up with a surplus.
I mean, that makes sense, but. Granted, if Michelle, I'm sorry, if she, if the employee didn't have a paycheck, zero dollar paycheck, then I guess, yes, theoretically, that amount that she would ordinarily get paid and could be utilized for temporary seasonal, but it would have to be like two to any.
And I'm not saying we're not moving money.
Yeah.
What we can do is limit it this time, and then at the end of the process, move it back.
Well, and the fact that my office hasn't seen anything from her physician yet as a, as a timeframe to come back, so I, I can't say one where it could be before then, it could be after, I, we don't know, that's, that's an uncertainty.
And then move the leave back versus time off the job versus meant for the fourth day or another job.
There's a lot of moving parts in that one.
Moving parts.
Yes.
Commissioner, the, the only time that I remember something of this magnitude is when we had the employee of last year or year before in our maintenance department, but we did not, he was not, yeah, he did not have a replacement during his absence. He as well, I believe, was out on FMLA for three plus months as well, and the department just figured it out, I guess. I don't remember any to where he went.
And Judge, you, I'm not opposed to work from home, but I had a situation like this for an ambulance service, and of course, we were dealing with protected files under the HIPAA laws that we could not take and subject ourselves to them, being able to become a part of the public domain. If a computer was left open or files were left out.
Right.
And someone else came in, because you're talking about personal residence now.
Yep.
Rather than a business, I, I have concerns of how would you keep your files from.
It would be difficult.
I would want to check the patent before we went.
Because we'd have to, you know, give her a place to secure everything, so we'd have to bring in a filing cabinet that's lockable. Typically, we have to have everything behind two locks, you know, as in my office.
So in your office, you couldn't guarantee whether or not.
I would have a very hard time guaranteeing that, in fact. The necessity here is that typically I have two full-time employees and a part-timer who would, you know, assist. And since the first week of January, I've had one and a half employees instead of two full-timers and a half. So I'm running at a deficit on production anyway. There's been other factors that have made it, so we're, we're having a difficult time keeping up with the workload, especially when, you know, we're, as I said, we're taking in a lot of money. It takes my, you know, my chief clerk additional time just to, you know, take in the payments as well as, you know, put out the warrants for, for people who haven't made their payments. So, you know, I, I would love to have it back to my two full-times and a part-time, but, you know, that day, you know, is a long way away. So at the very least, I need to have one and a half people. So for it to be just my chief clerk alone, if I don't get this money for the next two months, it would be incredibly difficult on us.
I, I do want to just make a budgetary point, though, that the temporary seasonal line item for any office is not designed to fill a part-time position. So I, and I, Judge Shaw's not the only one that I've shared this information with, but I caution department heads and elected officials to use that line item carefully because once you've exhausted those funds with a temporary person, you're done. And, and especially in cases like this where we didn't know that there was going to be an accident, that's what that line item is there meant for. So Judge Shaw, I just want to make, get clear that the temporary line item that was approved for you and the budget was not designed for you to fill with that employee.
In a full-time capacity, yeah.
In a full-time, part-time capacity, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of that.
Exactly, and you had shared that with me before, and that's why we're capping her out at twenty-nine hours a week now just to try to tread water, because I don't have that second full-time employee. Typically, she'd be working, you know, twenty-ish hours per week.
Right. I'm just making sure that the court understands that that temporary line is for, is a filling when your people are out of the office and not designed to work regularly every week.
Right. It's so that somebody could go on vacation, somebody could, you know, be out for, you know, appointments, other things like that.
Judge, I have two questions for you.
Yes, sir.
So, what, do you handle any HIPAA information in your office?
Um, well, we handle...
Give me an example.
Some of the things that we might have are juveniles, we have, that's protected information.
But HIPAA?
As far as HIPAA, I'm not exactly sure of any particular case that I can point to. But I do have, you know, personal information that would need to be protected.
Yeah, I know there may be some seizure stuff in there that, but the nation, well, you have your deputies in their vehicles in there with their laptops and that type of information as well, so. Okay, that, so the other question is, I'm just, I want to be very careful that we don't, I don't know what kind of word, we're flirting with problems with the Department of Labor when we continue to do this. Because there's two different distinctions. You have seasonal work and you have part-time work and full-time work. And I don't want those people over here. We've had them before and had to solve that problem. So, I just want you to understand that that's something we've discussed with the county attorney's office and we don't want to go there.
Right.
All right, commissioners, that's, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, just back to Mr. Daniel's point. Uh, well, I'm number one is I'm not really sure, I mean, I don't really, I do, but I don't have objections to working at home. I think in your environment, though, I don't think it's appropriate for that information to be out of your office. And in this particular case, I don't think that's appropriate. But if this continues to linger, then you're going to run out of money and you're only going to have one person.
Right. And that is one of my biggest fears, you know, to have to make some drastic changes and I'd have to learn some software to be the backup to the backup.
Because the other thing is I don't, I don't personally want to push, try to get somebody on my view here or anything besides, we've got our own doctor. I think we're asking for trouble. We ask for that. Just think, we need to, just back to the judge's point. We don't need to be pushing any issues or anything we need to follow what the rules are.
Right.
You can do, and hopefully everything will work out all right. You know, this is, I won't say it's uncharted territory, but it's just, it's just complicated, dangerous territory. But if it involves personnel issues, then...
Not something that happens all the time.
No. Well, I mean, any one of us could wind up in the same position.
Right.
Somebody gets sick, you bring in somebody temporary, and they're still sick and it lasts longer than they expected and the doctor expected, you expect it, and you're just, you're stopped.
Yep. That's exactly where we're at.
All right, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion for a budget amendment of seven thousand dollars to come out, sorry. Brenda, from where would it come from?
Non-departmental reserve for unexpected expenses.
Okay, budget amendment of seven thousand dollars to come out of non-departmental reserves to cover JP One's position that he needs until his employee returns.
And that would be a salary of six thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty cents. And the remaining are the employer-related taxes and benefits to be paid. They're not really benefits, but they're the taxes, employer responsibilities.
So, does it need to be the six thousand or...
No, it, we need a total, if you're gonna, a total of seven thousand to make the budget correct. But I say that so that Judge Shaw is aware of that seven thousand. Only three hundred and forty-eight hours is what you are considering for approval at twenty-nine hours. Or how many hours do you want to do it? But three hundred and forty-eight hours at sixteen forty-two, plus it's over budgeted. But I'll keep them on, on notice as he moves along, so he knows how much he has left.
All right, do I hear a motion, commissioners?
I'll make a motion to, again, Justice, at least, receive more budget, seven thousand dollars to increase six thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty cents in salary, plus the remainder being the tax of the payroll expenses for additional funding coming from the general fund, non-departmental reserve fund.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. We have any other discussion regarding agenda item number nine? Hear none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, aye is habit, the motion passes. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Commissioners, I've been advised that this new video system we have, if y'all will move your mics closer, they're having a hard time hearing you. So, you would just please do that. Thank you. Agenda item number ten, we have Ms. Brenda Trevino, county auditor, discuss and take action on going out for requests for qualifications for a grant writing firm.
Yes. So, I just wanted the court's consideration for approval for us, for my office, to submit the advertisement going out for a request for qualifications for a grant writing firm. I have been in contact with three different firms based on surrounding counties and who they use, as well as some that I have formed relationships with as well. But we need, we need this really bad. Kayla and I, right now, are being overloaded with managing our existing grants and projects that we've kind of put a halt at any type of research or upcoming, we have some upcoming grant, potential grant opportunities, and I don't want to get behind the curve ball. So, if we can get somebody recommended and approved, and then they can get on the ball, so.
It's gonna be the same RFQ, you know?
Uh, I don't believe that we did a formal RFQ for grant writing firm at that time. I believe those, if I remember correctly, I believe those firms just presented at court. But what I would like to do is put, and we may have, I don't remember, but I would like to put the formal RFQ, we went back last week to try to find one that the county did, and we couldn't find one. The last time that we saw that we did one was back when the original hazard mitigation plan was being created, and that was back in twenty, the original Langford one? It was, it was a while back. Oh, well, I guess it would have been about five or six years ago. Because it was right, yeah, it was going on six years. So, my plan is to submit the advertisement, hopefully get some responses in on their qualifications, set a court date for them to come and present, and then, you know, we can make the best recommendation for the county at that point. So, I would anticipate it probably being within the next, if we get it out into the paper, hopefully by, I would say, within the next two weeks. So, we're in March, so probably by the second court in April, maybe coming to, to the court for either presentations and/or recommendation. I don't know the timeline yet, so.
All right, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number ten.
Make a motion that we allow the auditor's office to develop and put out for requests for qualifications for writing firms to serve in Milton County.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Do we have any other discussion on agenda item number ten? Hear none, I'll call for the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would like to make sure that when you do the evaluations, that you place a lot of emphasis on grant research and success, you know, seeing new grants for foundations. What their experiences with our size and finances, and we need a lot of help, especially.
To write that into the argument.
Write that in, yeah. Have them, have them, give us their performance on that and certainly have that as part of the evaluation score.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Not, call for the vote. All of a favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes. Agenda item number eleven. We have Cindy Stafford, emergency management, discuss and take action on placing the county in a burn ban.
Good morning. I believe last week I emailed everybody our run numbers for just last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, which was astronomical. Our fire departments did an outstanding job, outstanding job. They were covering each other, they were all over the county. Our current KDBI is five ninety-three, it's an average of three percent per day going up, so it's not going to go down. So, I do believe the general consensus is the county should go back into a burn ban. I would like to go over the order and clarify what is and is not allowable by our current burn ban. So, if we continue to follow local government code, it's for firefighter training, public utility, natural gas line and mining operations, planting or harvesting of agriculture crops, excuse me, and burns that are conducted by a prescribed burn manager. Currently, there are no prescribed burn managers anywhere, not even in Bear County. So, that's left in there because it is part of local government code, but it is unfortunately not an option. Agricultural burns is for ten acres or more for the planting and harvesting of crops. What we're running into is development. People buy land that is currently ag exempt, but they want to develop on that. And the county attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but that is not an allowable option with local government code. So, if we enforce the burn ban, I need direction, please, on exactly what y'all want to... If we're gonna go solely by the local government code, then we cannot allow development burning. If we're going to change it, then the whole order needs to be changed, so. We have Chief Strelzick, Chief Lopez here. If y'all have any questions for them, they're the ones out responding to all of these fires.
Just so the public knows, I believe we responded to twenty-two fires last week.
Yes, yes, sir. And...
Yes, our departments did an awesome job last week.
Yes, they did. And those are just straight numbers. It could have been a call that the sheriff made that it wasn't an out-of-control burn. But when a fire department is taken out of service for any type of a call and something pops somewhere else, somebody's having to cover. So, I included those numbers so y'all have an idea of total numbers that these fire departments got called out on last week, so.
Basically, two weeks ago, we were hoping that we were gonna get rainfall, KBDI was gonna pop, and we didn't get either one of those.
No, sir. And no rain forecasted for the next two weeks at minimum, you know? Who knows? That's truly correct. But that's what our forecast is for National Weather Service as of now, no, no chance of participation.
So, we...
Weather is Chief Strelzick. Opinions?
Chief, come on up.
I'm gonna definitely say I'm in favor, and I think we should go back to the burn ban because last week was horrible. It's just getting drier and drier. There's a little bit of green out there, but it doesn't take long. And we have many more days to come of very low humidity. But also, while we're on the subject, I did have a question I just wanted to get some clarification on, so we know how to plan. What can we expect when we request assistance from the commissioners as far as equipment, personnel?
Yeah, I mean, it kind of depends on what we're doing if we break off.
Well, I understand that part, but...
I mean, we're like, y'all, we just can't stop and go somewhere else.
No, I understand that. I just meant more along the lines of, like, if we need to request equipment or something like that, we need the help, because...
It's only us all that have the calls. We can't, we're more than happy to help. But I still want to go back to, however we do it, I want some training through our guys because they need to know how to identify or what to watch out for so that they don't get themselves trapped. That's, that's my biggest concern.
I'm already working with Texas Forest Service to bring a dozer class here. I was waiting to see where we wanted to go with this, to bring it out. So, all I have to do is get with Texas Forest Service and say, yes, we want this dozer class. And they're gonna come out and do a, it's got a title, but it is dozer work for non-firefighter employees. So, they're gonna show you how to do the, burn the perimeter, or diss the perimeter. So, I will, I will get on that this afternoon.
And I know that usually when, for my guys, they're gonna watch out for y'all's equipment and stuff like that.
I mean, still, but it's, I think we could get in trouble. If somebody got hurt and they haven't had any training and we got them out there, and they make an issue out of it.
And this is directly related to the conversation I had with Chief Thompson last week. There was a request for rubber tire loader, and we have to find out whether or not this is where we can be as a challenge. I need to know if TAC is gonna take and cover the personnel. I need to know if we can get training. But if we get the training and TAC is not gonna take and, and be wanting to take and cover because you're transitioning, you're going from a county crew to a firefighting crew. You know, I mean, it, and all that is, is that you said dozer training, what dozer are we gonna use?
And I'm sure it's more than just dozer. I just asked Texas Forest Service for trainer, for training for y'all, the precinct workers. So, I'm gonna leave that at Texas Forest Service, what they bring down, y'all can probably tell them what it is.
I'm sure if you cover a maintainer, front end loader...
Yes, sir.
Cut the fire brake or a maintainer.
I was gonna say, I know there's, I'm pretty sure there's training out there for pretty much any piece of equipment because there are some departments that run maintainers to cut fire brakes. But we don't have that luxury around here because I know that nobody's gonna want to take a couple hundred thousand dollar maintainer through the brush. There's way too much glass and everything else on there. It's, it's tough enough with the front end loaders, but at least with the front end loaders, you have a little bit more ability to knock stuff down versus with the maintainer. All of your work is down low with the maintainer. You don't have nothing that you can raise up in the air to push stuff out of the way. That's a lot of times where I've seen it is out near, like, prairie areas where they have flat, open country, that they'll use maintainers to cut fire brakes, but we don't very rarely have that luxury around here. If we're calling for equipment, it's usually because it's somewhere we can't even get to with our trucks.
I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Aiken. Um, our insurance company does not fill any where or tell the county where to use our equipment. So, if the court, if any of the commissioners designated your employees to go work wherever you want them to work, it doesn't, in other words, it doesn't have to be a county road in order for something to be covered. If the employee is working under working hours and something were to happen, either to the employee or to the equipment, that, that's what we're covered for, regardless of what's in their job description, in other words. So, if it would be because you, Commissioner, are sending your guys out with your, our equipment to go help clear brush, I, I think there may be a difference between clearing brush and being a firefighter. I don't know, but then that, you know, that certainly would be covered. Now, if you have your guys with their hose trying to put out fire, then obviously that's not going to be covered. And I don't think that that's the intent of their request, so.
No, normally, when we're requesting equipment, it's just to help us gain access. That's our goal. Because if... Clearing a fence line or just making a path for us to get through, whether it's on foot or with the truck, that's usually our intention when we're requesting for, because we're at the point where we can't go no further on foot or with the truck.
Amanda was checking specifically with TAC if we were actually covered, if we were out in a fire emergency situation and a piece of equipment burned up, if it was covered or not. I haven't heard that from...
I can tell you, it would be, it would be no different if your piece of equipment were to catch on fire or your county roads. If the equipment... If the equipment itself is covered.
And I didn't check that question. Thank you.
What I would just recommend is considering the safety that your employees are doing in limited capacity to what they should be doing versus what they shouldn't be doing.
And this is only in an emergency situation like for life and property.
Also, since you mentioned the hazard mitigation plan, I'm trying to remember what was in there about wildfires. But if it's not in there, I would go back and add to it since we're fixing to have a report to approve it. It's a hazard education program. I cannot believe that anybody went out and started a fire last Tuesday. But there was, what, seven or eight of them at least?
About fifteen.
You know?
Started.
It's education.
I think there was six in our area.
People got to learn that all they need to do is check their website and whatever it is, so a mailer or something or whatever y'all feel is appropriate, that needs to be included in the hazard mitigation plan. I'd also ask the county attorney's office to work with the sheriff and the emergency management and the fire chiefs to come up with a system so that, as you talked about, if he goes out, he checks it, what is he checking for? Who needs to decide whether it's... Because I know it's in the dispatch. Sometimes it's illegal burns, sometimes it's trash fires, sometimes it's this, sometimes that. To help him so that everybody's on the same page, so that everybody knows that whatever that threshold is, they're getting a citation, period.
Yes, sir.
Especially if there's a burn ban. These people aren't taking this seriously enough. I had the unfortunate experience of having some idiot try and burn trash on the day and burned up forty acres of my property. In a ruin. And it's not any fun when you're trying to recover from that. I didn't lose a structure or animal or nothing. I lost a man. And I wasn't happy about it. And nobody did anything about it. And there was a citation there that could have been issued.
And it should have been.
It should have been issued.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, that comes from the heart of me. I understand this. I know what it's like. You know, also about educating people how to protect their houses from wildfire. I mean, look around here. How many houses do you see with bushes that are made out of wood? That affects the house. I mean, all this is simple stuff, but if they don't know, they can't protect them. If we don't have that in our hazard mitigation plan, it ought to be in there, some kind of education deal, some kind of... And I know Forest Service has plenty of flyers and stuff. All you got to do is order them.
It's in the mitigation, you know. It's very broadly written so we can do education for anything in emergency management, so.
Yeah, and the only thing I have to add is I agree that we should go back into burn bans. Last week was a very busy week for us, and we were working well and helping each other, district to district. And there was points where our resources, you know, we didn't have enough, right? We had to break off certain fire trucks from certain calls to go check on other ones and things like that. So it just takes one day, one moment, like you were saying, without also educating the citizens in the area to where it can get really bad for us. But with the forecast that was predicted and things like that, I agree as well.
So Cindy, let me ask you.
Both volunteer fire departments and all fire PSCs were out servicing the county at the same time for multiple hours.
Yeah, and we had, we actually sent one resource to Atascosa Fire because it was on ninety-seven and it was, it got out of containment and it was coming this way. They got it back in. So we had one sent. Adam, Chief Strelzick, y'all never made it? Okay, never mind. I thought we sent one. We were going that way. And I know New Berlin, New Berlin and Bear County helped us. I think those were the...
In car.
So we had three county, other counties coming over to help us with our fires. So it's... Yeah. It was terrible.
Commissioner King was called around three a.m. and nine to six a.m. putting out chemical fire.
Yeah. And it was still burning three days later. So I even had both my staff out trying to put eyes on a fire to determine how bad it was.
Would you even find out what kind of chemicals these people illegally storing chemicals that should have been, should have been known by?
The thing that I found, we found a label and all it said was it was diesel exhaust fluid on these toques. We haven't gone any further. That's the only things we could really find. The rest of it kind of burned up.
Burned up. And they're not a tier-two facility, so I'm assuming if they're illegally storing it, that would be TECQ. But I did try to find them under the steer program, and they're not listed as a storing facility, so.
If we approve this, it would be for ninety days?
Yes, sir.
And then we revisit it, so it'll be the first meeting in June we revisit it?
Yes, sir. And of course, if we get rain, substantial rain, I would love to come back and ask y'all to lift it early to allow people to burn. But at this time, it is just too much of a danger.
All right, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to reinstate burn ban. Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner King. Any other discussion regarding agenda item number eleven?
The only thing I do want to add is what Miss Stafford said, and now if you're a developer, you are not allowed to come on for agricultural purposes.
Okay.
Okay, clear. Thank you.
They still have ag permits that they can come in and get.
Yeah.
You can't, we can't issue a permit.
And if they do, are there going to be any consequences?
There should be, but we, without a fire marshal, it all falls back on the sheriff. They're the only ones that can issue a ticket. Or the constables, anyone that has that ticketing authority. I can only issue the permit. I don't issue the permit until...
Read your book. It's in here. The county does not have the authority to issue a permit.
For a burn ban?
Yep, that is correct.
Then why am I doing permits?
You can't be, back then, I'll read you the quote right here. It says specifically... That says people should never get presented in a position of having to quote authorize outdoor fires of any kind as firefighters or fire marshals. Most of them doing this now know that they don't have the authority to authorize outdoor burning in Texas. Only the state of Texas can do that. And the practice can only put them in a bad spot. As I mentioned earlier, the unfortunate use of the word permit in section three oh seven of the IFC is probably one source of the error. So we should not be issuing permits. If they, if they fall under the general burning, then they can go to TECQ. We talk to TECQ.
Okay. Emergency management will...
That's what I've asked this Nettles to straighten out for us, is to go through this book. I've sent her some other things. I've sent her some statutes. The sheriff has done some research, and we just need to all get on the same page on this.
I think we were going to try and, sorry, I think we were going to try and schedule a meeting between everybody to see exactly clarification on what we can do legally and then what's going to, what changes we need to do within our own departments.
Okay. So the way I understand it, the county's under a ninety-day burn ban and no permits will be issued, period, for anybody.
We good?
Well, I believe the code provides that there is an agricultural exception in the burn ban.
Right, but you can't issue a permit for that.
Well, it's...
That means it's my responsibility, if I'm, because I'm an ag exempt, I can burn the plant crop. I can't burn just brush.
Brush.
I can, I can burn crop residue.
For the planting or harvesting of crops.
We don't have that many people that burn crop residue here anymore. They're only using that ag exemption to burn brush.
That's correct.
If you come to the county and ask for permission to do that, you wouldn't just say, well, I'm part of the community, so I'm going to go ahead and burn.
No, they can't. They can't legally, okay? If they do, then that's, that's the whole purpose of this, is for whoever calls the sheriff's department and says, hey, my neighbor's burning brush, that, when that guy goes out there, he knows what the rules are. He says, where's your state permit? That's, he knows, asks that question. They don't have the state permit, then he gets out his ticket book and thus the fire department know, or if the fire department gets their first, they let them know that this guy doesn't have permission from the state to be burning. And we're done. They get a citation. And she's, and the sheriff now, I mean, there's like three places. Most of this is in the environmental code. But there is one place in the occupancy, or that's the safety code, that he can, that he can write a citation. They're all Class Cs. They're all going to be Class Cs. So, but we just need to, but every county does it different. And that's, that's part of the problem. That's what that book says if you read through it. There's like seventy-eight or ninety pages on burn. It's very complicated and it's covered under several rules. And if, if it's above a police officer's level to go out there and go, oh, look, in that, what they're burning is not only, they're not supposed to be burning, but it has treated lumber or chemicals or other things, then that's where they need the fire departments help to say, here are the things that are in there. And then maybe it goes to TECQ for an environmental investigation. And that's what she's trying to help us get all straightened out so that everybody can get on the same page. And those guys know when to kill, call the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department knows when to let the fire department know, hey, somebody's got to come out here and help me figure out what's going on. Because I, we can't expect them to be experts in that, just like we don't expect them to be experts in law enforcement.
Okay. We need to modify the order prohibiting burning, so I will get with the county attorney's office and we'll submit a new order because this one says that they have to apply forty-eight hours before burning, which is obviously what we're not going to do from this point forward. So I do not have an order for y'all to sign right now.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor, seconded, to extend it for ninety days. Is there any other? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I corrected. It's a new burn ban for ninety days. Any other discussion?
Let me finish up with about contractors. If they were anywhere else, if they were in a municipality, they would have to haul off all that refuse. That's a part of what they need to take and charge for their services. The fact that we're in the county, they want to take advantage of that, and they want to try to take and burn and destroy everything. And, you know, it's not fair to the other citizens that surround the property just then we're going for that to happen. They need to be prepared to take and pay to haul it off.
Where they can ship it.
Where they can ship it.
Where they can ship it.
If they had them, they had a couple of them.
They do.
We good? All right, I'll call for the vote. All of them in favor say aye. All those against? Motion passes.
Thank you.
We are in a burn ban. Item, agenda item number twelve, Sheriff Stewart, Sheriff's Office Progress Report. All right. Agenda item number thirteen, we have Ms. Genevieve Montenius County Clerk, discuss and take action on the Commissioners' Court Minutes. I'll give you...
Next motion in a period of minutes, February tenth, twenty-fourth. Will you certify?
Say again, I'm sorry. Commissioner Martin, I didn't hear your last part of your motion.
On the date, February tenth and February twenty-fourth.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Aiken. Any other discussion on agenda item number thirteen? Hear none? I'll call for the vote. All of them in favor say aye. All those against? Motion passes. Agenda item number fourteen, we have Ms. Botterford, Human Resource Specialist, presentation of payroll and personnel changes.
Good morning. Derek Johnson was hired part-time roadhand for Precinct Two, making eighteen ninety-three per hour effective March tenth, twenty twenty-five. Jeff Roser was promoted to an investigator with the sheriff's department, making twenty-eight seventy per hour or sixty-two thousand, six eighty-six, forty annually. Joseph Martinez was promoted to sergeant patrol deputy, making twenty-eight eighty-five per hour or sixty-three thousand, eight dollars and forty cents annually. Amanda Peterson was promoted to sergeant patrol deputy, making twenty-eight seventy per hour or sixty-two thousand, six eighty-six, forty annually. And Madison Dominguez was promoted to sergeant patrol deputy, making twenty-eight seventy per hour or sixty-two thousand, six eighty-six, forty annually.
Any questions, Commissioner? Thank you. Agenda item number fifteen, we have Ms. Brenda Trevino, County Auditor, discuss and take action on county bills.
Yes, so I have reviewed and approved a total of one million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. Just a note, about seven hundred and five thousand of that is related to our emergency operations that are refunded, so.
Ms. Trevino?
Yes.
A big uptick on this is the EOC payments?
Yes, sir. I believe seven hundred and five thousand and some change. That can be found on page, page seven. I believe one payment is to Broadus, the general contractor, and the other big payment is to Phelps for the electrical work.
All right, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to accept the bills.
I'll make a motion to accept bills for one million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Martin. We have any other discussion regarding agenda item number fifteen? Hear none? I'll call for the vote. All of them in favor say aye. All those against? Motion passes. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. All of them in favor say aye. All those against? We are adjourned at ten-ten a.m.